I call this meeting to order. Student recognition. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum, even though we don't have to have a quorum, but we do. Mr. Patrick Kennedy, Mr. Andrew Gonzalez, Coach Armando Coeher, and myself, Mr. Nieto. Student recognition. Dr. Gonzalez.
Board of Trustees and parents and staff members, we're very excited once again to celebrate the success of many, many students in many different areas. So, thank you for your support. Board of Trustees, thank you for your support. We are working hard on the complete educational program and getting recognized at the district, region, and state levels. So, we'll start with Mr. Rob Lethem.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
We're gonna start off our student recognition. First of all, we'd like to recognize some special athletes. How about a big hand for our Special Olympians from Westlaco ISB as they enter the room? Alright. Okay, so here we go. Let's recognize our Special Olympians. How about another big hand for all of them here? We want to congratulate several of our Special Athletes. These students competed in the annual Special Olympic Spring Games and brought home gold medals. Gold medalist in the softball throw, Justin Insignia. We have Jonathan Roma. Jonathan Roma? Jonathan? Not here? Okay. Perla Puente? Not here today? Jacob Romero? Jacob Romero? Jacob Romero here? Jacob Romero, is he here?
He's right there. Go ahead and move.
Right here. Alright, congratulations, Jacob Romero. What about Julian Prado? Julian Prado? Also want to recognize Julian. We also have some gold medalists in the 50-meter dash, and we have Kiana Caseres. Kiana? Is she here, Kiana? Alright, Kiana. We also have John Alex Medrano. John Alex Medrano? Is John here? Medrano? John? Medrano? Congratulations, John. We also have the 10-meter assisted walk, Trini Anaya. Trini? Not here? Phoenix Curry, 25-meter dash. Phoenix Curry? Right here, Phoenix? In the 100-meter dash, gold medalist Mariah Hernandez. Alright. Let's go back and recognize on the softball throw Julian Prado, who is here? Thank you, Julian. Alright. And we have the 100-meter dash, Mia Peralles. We also have, gold medal, the 25-meter dash and the tennis ball throw, Miguel Leyva. Miguel Leyva? Not here? Okay. 50-meter dash and the tennis ball throw, gold medal, Dylan Salceda. 50-meter dash, tennis ball throw, gold medal, Chelsea Carion. 100-meter dash and the softball throw, April Granados. April Granados? Is April here? Okay. Alright. Let's go to the high school team, one area championship, and this is in the basketball tournament. We have Juan D. Gonzalez, in the basketball tournament. Is Juan here? Juan Gonzalez? Ricardo Valderas. Ricardo Valderas? We also have, part of the basketball team, Ethan Rodriguez. Ethan Rodriguez? Not here? Zeke Palacios? Zeke Palacios? Here? Zeke Palacios? How about Jared Aguilar? Part of the basketball team? Jared Aguilar? Not here? Marco Alvarado? Also part of the basketball team? Recognizing, continuing on with the basketball team that won an area championship, David Wahardo. David Wahardo? Christian Medina? Christian Medina? Part of the basketball team? And we also have Stephanie Loera. We also want to recognize area champions who won gold medals in the following categories: 100-meter dash and softball throw, Isaiz Medina. The 100-meter dash and softball throw, gold medal winner, Jose Ibarra. Jose Ibarra? Tennis ball throw, Orlando Rodriguez. Tennis ball throw? And we also have the 50-meter dash, Michael Garcia. Alright, did we get everybody? Are we missing anybody else? We also have Alex Martinez, recognition for his award. We also have, is Emma, are you Emma Flores? Emma Flores? Part of the basketball team? Emma Flores was part of the area championship basketball tournament. So, congratulations to all of our Special Olympians. We also, we also want to recognize the Special Olympics Coordinator, Raymond Latta. Congratulations to his students. And if their parents are here, can they please stand or wave so they can be recognized? Thank you once again and congratulations, boys and girls.
Bye, congratulations.
Congratulations. to welcome into the boardroom, the Westlaco High School Honors Band. Come on in, boys and girls. Come on in. Y'all want to file in this way a little bit? Come on in. Some boys, y'all want to line up over here?
A lot of them.
So, tonight, we want to congratulate the Westlaco High School Honors Band, which recently, recently won the Sweepstakes Trophy. Okay, let me try it. Let me start over. Tonight, we want to congratulate the Westlaco High School Honors Band, which recently, recently won the Sweepstakes Trophy. The band earned Division One rating in concert, sight reading, and marching. And as I say your name, if you can please raise your hand or step forward so you can be recognized. Representing the Westlaco High School Sweepstakes Band, we have a long list here, and I know not everybody's here, but we're gonna recognize them anyway. Valerie Alejandro. Ethan Alvarado. Ethan? Ethan here? Jonathan Alvarado. Ian Amaya. Like to recognize Ian Amaya, part of the team. Connor Bustillos. Melena Cabrera. We also like to recognize Jalen Cardenas. Mar Jalen Cardenas? Also part of the band, Joseph Daniel Cardona. Joseph Cardona? Alia Castro. Congratulations. How about Elijah Cruz? Eliza Cruz? Maria De La Rosa? Maria De La Rosa? Natalie Estrada? We'd also like to recognize tonight, Annette Garcia? Also part of the band, we have Efrian Garcia. We'd also like to recognize Fabian Gonzalez. Fabian Gonzalez? Daniel Wahardo? Lydia Rose Guerrero? Destiny Hernandez? We'd also recognize, part of the band, Priscilla Onrato. Ricardo Ibarra? Reyna Johnson? Reyna? Not here? How about Adam Lopez? Bethany Lowe? We also have to recognize Brian Lowe. Alexis Martinez? Alexis Martinez? Diego Martinez? Diego? Lelani Martinez? Esteban Nunez? Matthew Ochoa? Josana Orta? Josana here? Luis Ortiz? Andres Peña? Andres Daniel Peña? Mari Cruz Perez? Mari Cruz? Veronica Rangel? Ryan Jacob Rivera? Audrey Anne Rodriguez? Rolando Ramon Junior? Gabriela Sines? We'd also like to recognize Brianna Silva? Isabel Tonoco? Also like to recognize tonight, Roman Valenciano? Also recognize tonight, Steven Vallejo? Steven? Not here? Emily Van Tilburg? We also have Alejandro Roel Vincente Vasquez. We also have Alicia Viera? Martin Villarreal? I think we got everybody that's here, and also Erastó Zapata Junior. We would also like to congratulate their band director, Mr. Rodrigo Leal. How about a big hand? And we also want to recognize the parents. Parents, if you're here, please stand or wave to the crowd. And once again, congratulations to the honors band of Westlaco High School. Good job.
Great job, congratulations.
Alright, how about a big hand for some students from Westlaco East High School, part of the one-act play competition? Tonight, we want to recognize several students from Westlaco East High School. These theater students received awards for their participation in UIL one-act play. As I say your name, if you can step forward, please. Who, this person, won the Tech Award, Desiree Alanis. Winning honorable mention cast award, Isaac Coronado. Honorable mention cast award, Brianna Alanis. And I see that she is not here, but also receiving All-Star Cast Award, Analisa Salinas. We would also like to recognize their sponsor, and that's Ms. Mintz. Lucia, Ms. Mintz, if you could please stand and be recognized. Parents, if you're here, can you please stand and be recognized? I don't know if any parents made it out today? Once again, congratulations to the Westlaco East one-act play competition. Y'all always do a great job. Congratulations. Moving right along here. Alright, let's start off with the, how about a big hands? We have some students that are walking into the boardroom now. These are some of our students who participate in UIL activities, UIL academics. How about a big hand? These are some students from Westlaco High School, part of the UIL academic team. We want to congratulate these students who competed at the 316A UIL Academics Meet. These students devote their free time, prepare to face off against schools like the Science Academy, schools from Harlingen, Harlingen South, San Benito, Los Fresnos, Brownsville-Hanna, and Brownsville Rivera. So, from Westlaco High School, winning second place in district in current, current issues and events, Melena Cabrera. Alright, and winning second place in district copy editing, this was Daniela Maldonado. Is she here? Winning second place in headline writing, Jasmine Casas. Winning second place in ready writing, we have Zuriel Martes. And we also have, we have two more individuals. I know this individual's not here. She won first place in copy editing, headline writing, and ready writing, Brianna Miranda. Not present? And we also have, placing third at district, third at regionals, and also a state qualifier in computer applications, Lisbeth Villanueva. We would also like to recognize their coaches, their UIL, part of the UIL coaches, Ms. McCall, Adrian Villagomez, and Ms. Monica C. Fuentes. Parents, if you're here, can you please stand and be recognized? Any of the parents here today?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. These are part of the students of the Westlaco High School Academic, UIL Academic Team. Alright, let's bring in our next group of kids, our students. We would like to recognize, these are part of the Westlaco East High School UIL Academic Team. How about a big hand for them? Alright, as I say your name, we're gonna recognize you, and we're going to talk about your achievements for this year. I know y'all did exceptionally well this year, especially some, some of you guys. So, as I say your name, if you could step forward so that we can recognize you. We're gonna start off with this individual, won third place in poetry interpretation, Isaiah Paredes. Winning third place in Lincoln Douglas Debate, Kayla Saldana. The literary criticism team won first place in district, and team members are Elizabeth David Magaña? Bianca Cosme? Victoria Mena? Also winning second place individually in literary criticism, Angie Escalon. And winning the district championship in literary criticism, winning first place, Umberto The journalism team also brought home the district championship title for the fourth consecutive year. Team members are Amanda Cabrera. Placing third individually in editorial, part of the journalism team, Aitza Roque. Winning first place, a district championship, or a district title in editorial writing, also part of the journalism team, Eva Torres. And another district champion, this time in feature writing, part of the journalism team, Larissa Rodriguez. We had several students that competed at the state level in UIL academics. The Westlaco East High School Accounting Team recently won the 2019 District 316A and Regional Championship Trophies, winning first place at all the Invitational Meets. Wow. This marks the seventh consecutive year that the Westlaco East High School UIL Accounting Team is undefeated at all the Invitational Meets. This is also the school's 10th consecutive district championship in accounting. So, and the group just returned from state competition, and as a group, they finished third place in the 6A Conference in the entire state of Texas. Okay. So, what we're gonna do, we're gonna recognize you individually, and we're also gonna present you with your medals for winning the district championship, right? So, the state championship, we're gonna give you your state championship medals here. They weren't able to give them to you guys up at state because y'all went to prom, right? So, we're gonna do it here, right? And this is Gumesindo Raulel, who is their sponsor, who has taken this team, you know, to 10 straight district champions. So, how about a big hand for Raulel? Team members of the accounting team, Carla Jimenez. Congratulations. We also have team members, Danielle Magaña. Danielle? Danielle Magaña is also gonna hold a second, state second runner-up, third-place trophy. We also have Joel Ramos. Winning third place in district, also part of the team, Karen Lopez. And winning second place at district, third place at regionals, part of the team, Ashley And we would also like to recognize their coaches, who did an outstanding job. You met Gumesindo Raulel, part of the accounting team. We also have Maria Flores. Maria? Is she here? Domingo Fabela, Joe Ramos, I know he's here. Joe Ramos? And his wife, Wendy Ramos, as well. Congratulations to the UIL team. Once again, congratulations, students. I don't know, the board wants to say anything on this great accomplishment by this team.
Actually, Mr. Raulel, and of course, the UIL Economics Team. 10 years of district title, that's outstanding, Mr. Raulel. Continue, and I know the rest of you, you did outstanding. We're proud of you, especially going all over the state. So, congratulations again.
Parents, I know parents are very, very proud, and they could please stand and be Thank you once again, and congratulations, students. You may exit this way.
Congrats.
Congratulations, great job.
You're very welcome.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Next year, they're gonna try to make it 11 in a row. Alright, how about a big hand for some of our students who participated in the regional science fair and advanced to state competition? Alright, we want to recognize some of our students who competed in the science fair and went on to the regional competition and state competition. We'll start off with a middle school student. As I say your name, if you could please step forward so we can recognize you. Winning second place at regionals in the biomedical and health science junior division, She is from Coeher Middle School. From Central Middle School, winning third place in material science category at regionals, Haley Delamora. Also from Central Middle School, winning first place in environmental engineering, Devin From Westlaco High School, winning third place in environmental engineering, and team project members, we have, well, let me start off first, I'm sorry. Winning third place in environmental engineering, Michaela Mata. From Westlaco High School, congratulations, Michaela. And we also have, from Westlaco High School, project members Diego Ornelas and Jordan Cancino, who won first place at regionals in computer software category. Are they here today? I don't see them here today. Okay, congratulations to Ornelas and Cancino. Alright, from Westlaco East High School, another team project, won first place at regionals in embedded systems, senior division. Congratulations goes to Orlando Cabrera. Orlando? And we also have Raúl Rodríguez. Raúl Rodríguez? And we also have Raúl Rodríguez. Well, congratulations students. We'd also like to recognize the sponsors Mary Yáñez, Jaime Gatton, Pedro Solis, Maria Castillo, and Tomás Padilla. Congratulations to all of them. Parents, if you're here, can you please stand and be recognized? Congratulations students, great job on the science fair. May exit this way. All right. All right, how about if you come on in? We want to recognize one of our students from Westlaco High School, who won a very special art award this year. Well, one of our very talented young artists recently competed at the state visual arts scholastic event contest, and we are happy to announce that Westlaco High School student Lisbeth Villanueva won a gold medal rating. If you have a chance, we don't have a photo of your artwork, but if you have a chance, check it out on social media, it's very, very nice. Congratulations Lisbeth. We'd like to recognize her art teacher Diana Juárez, and I don't know if any of your, if your parents are here at all, they can please stand and be recognized? Parents? Not yet? Okay. Okay, you want to wait right there? You're part of the next category too. You're going to get three certificates tonight, okay? All right, so as they're walking in, we're going to recognize, these are students from the career in technology education, who completed at the state and national levels in various clubs and organizations. All right, we're going to start off with these students represented the, their school and district in a wide variety of contests. We're going to start off with the Business Professionals of America. High school chapter did extremely well. As I say your name, from Westlaco East Mario Trevino. I think we have, we're going to start, I think y'all are Westlaco High School, correct? Okay. All right, we're doing both at the same time. Mario Trevino, I know he's not here, but he was elected as reporter for the state BPA organization, so a big hand for Mario Trevino. Also from Westlaco East, elected associate vice president Crystal Salinas. And then fourth place at state in fundamental desktop publishing Kaylin Resendez. Sponsors from Westlaco East are Enrique González and Anne Christensen. Are they here? Also for BPA from Westlaco High School, won third place at state in advanced in office systems and procedures Stephanie Castillo. Won third place in database applications is, and also qualified for national competition Okay, up next, winning third place in payroll accounting Adamari Ochoa. And winning first place at state in fundamental word processing Venencia García. And winning first place in basic office, office systems and procedures Lisbeth Villanueva. Winning fourth place in advanced office systems and procedures at state, advancing to nationals, and we're happy to announce that she also won first place at national competition Vanessa Velázquez. She's not present. She is not present. Okay, we're going to continue on. Okay, let me, the sponsors for Westlaco High School are Alicia Gines, Joe Alvarado, Amanda Rodríguez, and Maria Rodríguez. Congratulations to them. And you came in just on time, I think you had this planned, right? Representing the DECA organization, we had one high school student who traveled to state competition held in Dallas. We want to congratulate this young man. He won first place at state with his entrepreneurship business growth plan and competed in international competition, and his name is Jackson Parker Galván. We would like to recognize the sponsor for DECA Yolanda Martinez and Ruby Silva. If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? All right, let's, how about a big hand for, y'all can stay right there, we have more students that are coming in right now. And our next group of students here represent the Westlaco High School Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. Now, these students went all the way to nationals and won first place in the state FCCLA Leadership Conference in Programs and Actions Occupational Category. Also, this group won first place in the High School Student Body Award sponsored by Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. As first place national winners, this group will travel to Anaheim, California to receive a thousand dollar chapter award at the FCCLA National Leadership Conference. Also, it was recently announced that this group won the Keep Texas Beautiful Government Award and Youth Organization Award for their work at Gibson Park in collaboration with the city of Westlaco. Anyone who has passed by Gibson Park recently, there's a beautiful mural out there, a walking track, and the park is always clean, and that is in part because of these kids right here and their organization. So we'd like to recognize those students that are here, part of the FCCLA Annette García. Dominic Friar. Well, Brandon Miranda. She's not here. And I don't have you two, your name on the list, do we add them? And they're also part of the FCCA organization, thank you for being here as well. Thank you. We also want to recognize the sponsors Mary Martin, Kerry Nance, and Guadalupe Caranza. Parents, if you're here, parents, can you please stand and be recognized? Parents of the students? Once again, congratulations students, awesome job. Thank you very much for being here.
Congratulations.
Just getting started. Okay, let's, how about of the following students, next students come on in to be recognized? These are members of the Starlets, Westlaco East High School Dance and Color Guard Team. How about a big hand as they enter the boardroom? Tonight, we want to congratulate the Westlaco East High School Dance Guard, the Starlets. This group of young ladies recently won the regional championship in the novice division during the Texas Educational Color Guard Association Competition. Congratulations. Now, we are going to, we're going to recognize you individually. As I say your name, if you could please step forward to be recognized. The regional champions are, we start off with Paulina Ramírez. Paulina's not here? Okay. Not to follow. Areli Cantú Salazar. Erica Caceres. Their captain Zoe Cruz. Amery García. Delina González. Laura González. Would also like to recognize part of the group Amery López. Tylee Mata. Anna E. Pérez. Another captain on the team Jaylyn Rodríguez. And Patricia Villa Franca. All right, once again, congratulations, way to represent WISD at all those regional competitions. We would also like to recognize their director Laura Sedio. And if your parents are here, can your parents please stand and be recognized? Excellent job, girls, congratulations. Tonight, we would like to recognize some track athletes from Westlaco East High School. How about a big hand for our track athletes here from Westlaco East High School for the Tonight, we want to congratulate the track and field athletes for their success this season. The Westlaco East High School Wildcats and Lady Wildcats concluded this season with several district championship titles. We'll start off, district championship in the pole vault Allison Rogers. District champ in the long jump and 200 meter run, and also area champion of these events Their coach is Josh Davis, Mr. Davis, Coach Davis. We'd also like to recognize the Wildcat Boys four-by-two-hundred-meter relay team who won the district championship, area championship, and advanced to regionals. Team members are José Serna. Also part of the team Hector Muniz. Raven Figueroa. And John Animas. We'd like to recognize their coach, Coach Tom Owens. Coach Owens. He was here earlier. And parents, if the parents are here of these fine students, they can please stand and be recognized? Congratulations. All right, now we'd like to recognize the track athletes from Westlaco High School. How about a big hand as they enter the boardroom? All right, these are part of the boys team. The Westlaco High School track programs continue to produce winning seasons. The boys track team had several of its members win individual district titles and advanced to regionals. District champions are, in the four-by-one-hundred-meter relay, the team is made up of Joel Maldonado. Step forward, Joel. We also have Jesús Hernández. KJ Jones, not here, and Devon Denna, also not present. Congratulations, district champions there. We also have district champion in the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay, and the team members are Gabriel Mayner Moran, Daniel Banda, and Sebastian Flores. We also want to recognize Gabriel González, because not only was he part of the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay team, but he also won the district championship in the 100 and the 400 as well. Congratulations Gabriel González. Their head coach Gus Cabrera. And we'd also like to recognize their parents. Parents, if you're here, can you please stand and be recognized? All right, congratulations, boys, great season. Up next, we would like to recognize the girls track team, the Lady Panthers from Westlaco All right, let me say a few words about these girls, and we'll recognize them individually. The Lady Panthers varsity track and field team are the 2019 returning champions for District 31-6A. This is the eighth year in a row they have won district, and seventh year in a row they have claimed the area championship title and regional runner-up. As I say your name, I know some of the girls aren't here, but as I say your name, if you could please step forward and we'll recognize you individual. Kirsten Padilla. Kirsten, not here. Aliya Cantú, also not present. Sarah Duran. Savannah Mendez. Savannah? Natalie García. And Arcely Moreno. Kimberly Espinosa. Kim's not here. Okay, let's move on now. We would like to also recognize some individuals, area and regional qualifiers in the discus, Chia Cavassos. District champion in the 3200 meter, 1600 meter, area and regional qualifier in the 3200 meter and the 16 meter run Destiny Longoria. Area qualifier in the 3200 meter and 16 meter run Samantha Sinfuegos. District runner-up, area and regional qualifier in the pole vault Stephanie Almazan. Stephanie? We'd also like to recognize area qualifier in the pole vault Leila Alvarado. Leila? Not here? Area qualifier in the 400 meter dash Ana Vela. We have a district champion in the four-by-one-hundred meters, four-by-four-hundred-meter relay, area champion in the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay, area and regional qualifier in the four-by-one-hundred meter and the four-by-two-hundred-meter relay, and the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay Kalissa Cavassos. District champion in the four-by-two-hundred-meter relay, four-by-four-hundred-meter relay, area qualifier Alexa Davila. Area qualifier for the 100 meter and 200 meter dash, area champion and regional qualifier in the four-by-two-hundred-meter relay Liana Cavassos. Area and regional qualifier in the long jump and triple jump, district and area champion in the four-by-one-hundred, four-by-two-hundred, and four-by-four-hundred-meter relays, regional champion and four-by-four-hundred-meter relay and state qualifier Emma Arntz. We'd also like to recognize district and area champion in the four-by-one-hundred, four-by-two-hundred, four-by-four-hundred relays, regional champion in the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay, and state qualifier Jenna Martinez. District and area champion in the triple jump, area qualifier in the long jump, district and area champion in the 300 meter hurdles, fourth place at regionals, district and area champion in the four-by-one-hundred-meter relay, four-by-two-hundred-meter and four-by-four-hundred-meter relays, regional champion and state qualifier in the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay Lisa Marie Sanchez. We also have area qualifier in the long jump and triple jump, district champion, area champion and regional champion in the 800 meter run, 400 meter dash, and the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay, state qualifier in all her events, and she recently placed fifth in state in the 800 Amity Ibarb. We'd also like to congratulate their coaches. We have Lily Skalinski, Jaime Cavassos, Billy Rivera, Joshua Cantú, and their head coach Pablo Amaguer. If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Parents, making noise. All right. All right, parents are going to take a quick picture. All right, parents are going to take a quick picture. Congratulations, and that wraps up our awards and recognition.
Coach Amaguer, let me take a few minutes here to commend you on your dedication for the last eight years here as a West Loco High School track coach and your staff for doing an outstanding job, but your job is not done, you've got another three years to go, correct? So congratulations again.
Congrats, Coach.
Also, we had quite a number of recognitions tonight. Thank you to all the sponsors and coaches, they spend a lot of time with our students, not only in UIL academics, but in the arts, the track meets, I mean, there's so many accomplishments this year that I want to commend all those coaches, and of course the sponsors too, and of course the parents of the students that give them that opportunity to participate in all those events. Congratulations again.
Just again, so very proud, coaches, teachers, principals, just everybody, parents, of the spirit that exists to make sure that our children are excelling in academics and the arts and athletics and building leadership and character. Thank you, so very proud.
A German of all the recognitions. Are we ready to start the board meeting, or we need a few minutes?
I'm ready.
You ready?
I'm ready.
I call this meeting of the West Loco Board of ISD, Board of Trustees, to order. Let the minutes reflect that we have a quorum of trustees are present, and that this meeting has been duly called, and that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. The time is now 6:25. Those trustees present and comprises the quorum today are Mr. Patrick Kennedy, Dr. Jaime Rodriguez, Mr. Andrew Gonzalez, Mr. Erasmo Lopez, and Coach Armando Cuellar, and myself, Mr. Nieto. Opening prayer, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, our invocation will be led by Martha Garcia, a kindergarten teacher from North Bridge Elementary. Mrs. Garcia, welcome.
Good evening. May you bow your heads and let us put ourselves in the presence of the Lord, Jesus, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord Jesus, I give you thanks and praise for this evening, for gathering us here today. I ask that you be in our midst, prepare our minds and our hearts to hear today's discussion. May you send the Holy Spirit upon these people, fill them with the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, so that this meeting can be productive and pleasing to you. Guide the board members as they make decisions that will better serve our students that you have entrusted in us and the community. Bless all the students that are testing this week, and remove all the anxiety and all that is not of you, Lord. As for the teachers and administrators, give them strength to endure all that is asked of them during this testing time. Lord Jesus, as they close this meeting, may they give you honor and praise, and may your most precious hand be on them throughout the rest of the week. I ask all this and all that they have in their hearts, and I ask all this in your precious name, Lord Jesus, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Item number four, Pledge of Allegiance and Texas pledge, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we have two fifth grade students from North Bridge Elementary who will lead us in the pledge. Mr. Robleto.
All right, I would like to recognize a couple of students from North Bridge Elementary. You can please stand forward, step forward, stand over here. I'm going to say a few kind words about you guys, okay? First of all, we have here Maya Gomez, who is a fifth grade student from North Bridge Elementary and is the daughter of Ramiro and Sulema Gomez. She has successfully participated in UIL oral reading at the campus and district level. Maya has been an integral part of the Leader in Me at North Bridge, and is currently a morning announcer for the campus. Maya recently participated in the Little Wildcat Relays, representing North Bridge, the Relay for Life event, and she was also part of the choir and numerous art contest. Her favorite hobby is to dance. Maya plans on attending college to become a surgeon. How about a big hand for Maya Gomez? And if her mother is here, could she could please stand and be recognized? Also, we'd like to recognize here Sofia Ramos, who is a fifth grade student, also at North Bridge Elementary, and is the daughter of Angel and Dolores Ramos. Sofia is a North Star Awards announcer at North Bridge, and has been a school ambassador for the Leader in Me program. Sofia successfully participated in UIL maps, graphs, and charts, numerous art contests, and performs as a member of the North Bridge Choir. Her favorite hobby is to draw. Sofia wants to attend a four-year performing arts college and plans on becoming famous, a famous artist and dancer. Sofia would like to travel the world performing and drawing. How do we hand for Sofia Ramos? If her parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Parents? All right, a very complete rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by our students. You ready? All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge? Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Thank you very much, students.
Very good job.
Item number five, awards and recognitions. I know we had several earlier, but we have a few more on task right now. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, the Mid Valley Town Choir newspaper holds a yearly contest to determine their readers' favorite people, places, and things. This year, West Loco ISD won several Best of the Best awards. The 2019 Reader's Choice Awards for the best elementary school is Margot Elementary.
So for those of y'all that don't know about this competition, it comes out of the Mid Valley Town Choir, and people get to vote by voting for whoever their favorite person is or favorite school, and we have several categories at West Loco ISD.
Okay, next, best middle school, Cuellar Middle School. Best high school, West Loco East High School. Best school teacher, Clarissa Ellis, West Loco East High School. Best school principal, Dr. David Gamboa, West Loco East High School. Best school coach, Michael Burgett, West Loco East High School. And the best school district in the USA, West Loco ISD. Congratulations to everyone, thank you. And we have one more recognition, Mr. Robleto, will you lead us in this one?
So for this one, would we could please have Coach Eddie Sedna step forward, please? Coach Sedna, from West Loco High School, the baseball coach from there, how about a big hand as he walks over? We'll do a little bit of both, all right. So tonight, we have a special presentation to make for a special occasion. Our West Loco High School head baseball coach recently celebrated his 400th win. We congratulate Eddie Sedna for this career milestone. Let me tell you a little bit about Coach Sedna. He has completed 22 seasons for the West Loco Panthers, and played at our baseball field since it was first built back in 1976 when he was a sophomore. During the 1994-95 season, Sedna became an assistant coach under head baseball coach at the time, Isidoro Nieto. And then he became the head coach himself in 1998, where he has been ever since. Under Coach Sedna, the Panthers have made 18 state playoff appearances, won three district championships, nine by district championships, and one area championship. The Panthers have made the state playoff appearances consecutively for the past 14 years. Through the years, Coach Sedna has coached and mentored hundreds of student athletes, and helped them not only perfect their game, but become better citizens. Congratulations to Coach Eddie Sedna on his 400th win.
Coach Sedna, since I hire you, I'm going to take a picture with you.
We'd like for the family to step up, take a photo with Coach Sedna, any of your family members that are here, they can please step up here and take a photo.
Congratulations again. Coach Sedna, let me, Coach Sedna, first of all, congratulations again for your outstanding accomplishments over your number of years, and of course 400 wins. You went the coaching route, I went a different route, but you were very successful, so I commend you. It'll be hard to replace you after you decide a few more years, whatever you decide, you know, but congratulations again. We're proud of you.
Congratulations.
Item number six, proclamation for school nurse recognition week, May 13 through 17, 2019, Dr. Canales.
Mr. Robleto.
Okay. We have a couple of proclamations to read tonight. First of all, are there any speech therapists here that they could please stand to be recognized as I read this proclamation? Speech therapist?
Nurse.
The nurses, the nurses are first.
We do nurses first?
Yes.
Grab that, sit down. Nurses, if any nurses are here, can the nurses please stand and be recognized? Nurses?
There they are.
Nurses, nurses, our nurses. Whereas West Loco ISD youth are a treasured national resource whose health, education, and well-being are interrelated, vital concerns of family, school personnel, and community members, and whereas professional school nurses strengthen and facilitate the educational process by improving and protecting the health status of children and youth, and whereas the major focus of school nursing services is the prevention of illnesses and disability, and the early detection and correction of health problems within the school and community, therefore, Isidoro Nieto, president of the West Loco Independent School Board, does hereby proclaim the week of May 13 through the 17th as School Nurse Recognition Week. Congratulations, nurses.
Let the record reflect that Dr. Rivera came in at 6:28. Item number seven, proclamation for Better Speech and Hearing Month, May 2019, Dr. Canales.
Sir Robleto.
We have another proclamation to read. We would like to recognize our speech therapists, if they're here, can they please stand and be recognized? Speech therapists. Be it so resolved that the month of May be proclaimed a better hearing and speech month, and we encourage all citizens to recognize the achievements of our professionals in improving the quality of life for people with communication disorders. We salute the speech-language pathologists, speech therapists who work tirelessly to bring better hearing and speech to the 1 in 10 families who are affected by communication disorders. Speech and language disorders take many forms, babies can be born with this disorder, accidental injury or illness can cause them at any age. Speech and language disorders can limit academic achievement, social adjustment, and career goals. Therefore, Isidoro Nieto, president of the West Loco ISD Board of Trustees, does hereby proclaim May 2019 as Better Hearing and Speech Month. Congratulations to all our speech therapists.
Item number eight, public comments, we don't have any public comments tonight. Item number nine, superintendent's report, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we have four brief reports this evening, beginning with after-school, Centers and Education under the direction of Mrs. Katie Reyes, Student Enrollment ADA, Preliminary STAR scores for fifth and eighth grade, and Insurance. Mrs. Reyes, welcome.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Nieto, Dr. Canales, members of the board.
Good evening.
We are currently in our year three of five-year grant of our after-school program, and there's so many amazing things going on, I'm just so excited and grateful that I work for this program and this school district. Here at West Loco ISD, our ACE program believes that all students deserve the opportunity to reach their full potential. We partner with the district, with communities, families, to provide engaging, fun, and interesting activities that will guide our students to discover their individual passion and develop 21st century skills to succeed. A couple of our district partnerships, we work together with a lot of different departments, and just to enhance our program, enhance their programs, and we work together, we all, we hit all our major components by doing this for our ACE program, which, family engagement, so we partner up with parental involvement, and we put on a Leader in Me parent conference. So being that all our elementary campuses have a Leader in Me program, we like to put on this conference for our parents, which we had about, a little over 80 parents participate this past year, and we had student performances, it was a great turnout. We also work with our Fine Arts Department, we are part of the Fine Arts Fiesta Committee, and this also allows us to represent our ACE students and all the fine arts that they do during our after-school program. We also work with Student Support Services, we help pilot our SASI program this year, which is to help improve attendance and increase our student achievement. We, this summer, I'm excited, we are going to be working with a couple of the CTE teachers for our summer program. We are going to be having some agricultural activities. We are going to be having some agricultural activities and cosmetology, and also some culinary arts during our summer program this year. These are just a few of our academic and enrichment activities. I'm sure the list could go on, but I only cut it down to a few. This hits one of our district goals, student success literacy focus, and engaging learning environments. So academically, we have a write-brain books curriculum that we have. This is for our 3rd through 5th grade students, and these students are, go through a process of how to write a book, and it gets published at the end of about six weeks. We have some number sense activities, we have some STEM activities all across our program. We had this year some Saturday tutorials. And of course, we have homework help through all our program. A couple of our successful enrichment programs are our Flocorico Dance Program. We have soccer, chess, we have culinary arts, some character building classes, arts and crafts, book clubs, we've, there's so many. We have our, another district goal that we target are parent-community-business industry partnerships. So every month at about each campus, we have family events that we like to host. We'll bring in our ACE family, family members. And our students get to work together with their parents, or grandmothers, anybody who's available to come and participate with them. We have Home Depot building nights. So this is a free, cost, free of charge to our parents from Home Depot as well. They bring in some activities for them, they, they've built birdhouses before, they've built little flowerpots. And so it's just something to engage the parents and their students. We have Busy Bristol's Art Studio who comes in to all our campuses as well. And they have different, an array of arts and crafts activities. Sometimes there's painting, sometimes there's wreath making. They do a really great job with our parents as well. We have fall and spring dance recitals that we put on, and those are also very successful. We just had one on Friday, May 10th, and it was amazing. Behavioral Health Solutions, they come in and they host some information nights for our parents as well. Topics could be anything from bullying, character building, social media awareness. And we also have coming up our ACE Summer Program. We service our kinder through 5th grade students. We have a couple of activities for them, sports and outdoor recreation, some fine arts, some science and STEM programs, some career exploration. It's a six-week program, which would be, will be beginning May 28 through July 4th. We are Monday through Thursday, and we do have a couple of field trips every week. For our students, we have a lunch and learn at CC's Pizza. We'll be headed to Gladys Porter Zoo, Estero Yano Grande State Park, Busy Bristol's Art Studio, the Sea Turtle Inc. at South Padre. We have UTRGV Coso Stedisla, the Gibson Park, and the Plaza Sports Center. And here are some upcoming events that I'm really excited about. So one of our elementary campuses was selected for the Y for Y NASA STEM Project, Y, Youth for Youth. And this STEM project is a partnership between NASA and the US Department of Education's 21st Century Community Learning Centers. And so this, the site that was selected was Memorial Elementary. And so this site would execute a series of engineering design challenges for 3rd through 5th grade students, enabling them to develop solutions to real-world science and engineering problems faced by NASA scientists, engineers, and astronauts today. So what they will be doing is, throughout the year, they will be able to, well, they signed up to create a mission to Mars. So they will be, the teacher that will also be helping and the coordinator at that campus will be provided professional development through Y for Y and NASA. And they will develop a device to slow down spacecraft landing on Mars. So they could use anything, household items, they could, anything around the schooling that ACE is able to provide, things like that. It's gonna be really neat, and they'll have some timelines throughout the year, and we will keep you posted on that. Oh, so next we also have a, which I'm really excited about, is a student showcase at Osticon. Osticon is our Texas State Out of School Time Initiative Conference. And so we have been asked to showcase our Flocorico Dance Team. So we have a couple of campuses that will be represented. We have Margot Memorial and Ibarra Elementary. We'll have a couple of dancers from those three schools. And they will be showcasing what they learned all year through Flocorico during our, the second day of our conference, during the lunchtime right before our guest speaker goes on to, to speak at our conference. So we're really excited about that. And before I go on to our last slide and ask if there are any questions, I did receive a message on our Facebook page, our WISD ACE 21st Century Facebook page. And I was really touched by this message that I received yesterday afternoon. And it's a parent from one of our campuses. It says, "ACE is a program that bridges the gap between parents and school." Excuse me. "They help with homework, and they get kids involved in extracurricular activities. This program has helped my three kids do better in school, be more outgoing, and has given them a sense of belonging in the school." It says, "Kudos to Ms. Salas," our co- coordinator, "for a job well done. The dance performance of 510 2019 was amazing and well orchestrated. Amazing, simply amazing," is what it reads. And with that being said, are there any questions?
You said this program was for how long, how many years, or?
A five-year grant.
This is our second year?
This is our third year.
Third year, okay. And the criteria for those 1st through 5th grade to attend in the summer program?
Kinder through 5th grade?
Yes.
And the criteria is pretty much open, but we like to go with the students who have high attendance throughout the school year that are available to attend our summer program. And we also have five other programs that we have during our summer program, which is our Fine Arts Department, Technology, and Summer School.
Good job.
Thank you.
Copies, board members?
Good job.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Student enrollment, Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, District Enrollment Membership Comparison, you had the report before you. Enrollment, we're down 140 from this time last year, and that's the 33rd week average enrollment. The membership is also down, remember, everybody who's enrolled is not necessarily in membership. You have to meet the criteria for membership, and that's down to 53 from last year. The breakdown is 169 difference in elementary schools for membership as opposed to last year at this time. Middle schools are up by 15. High schools are down 105 in membership, and for the grand total of 253. So membership's down, attendance is up. If you look at ADA in 2018, 33 weeks of school, to 2019 ADA, you see in 2018 it was 95.93, and 2019 it's 97.25%, which is, you know, an increase from last year. So we have less students enrolling in membership, but they're attending better than they did the previous year. And then we do have...
Where, you're in the red, 638? How are you making that, how are you making that up? From your fund balance?
No, with tax collections. Right now with tax collections, we project that we'll have about between half a million to three-quarters of a million surplus in the taxes. So that should help cover the deficit on ADA. Same as it did last year.
You'll cover the deficit, but you're still in the red.
Well, we'll be on the red on the ADA, but with the taxes we'll cover it.
That's what I mean.
We did not achieve the ADA.
But if you had zero here, you would still get your taxes.
Right.
So you're still in the red.
Yeah, this part you say.
Let me just commend the principals, because this ADA is tremendous. When you have a 97.25, that is excellent. Good job to the principals.
Okay, so that, okay, so the next part, if you're ready, if you have any questions? The next part is the student data for 5th and 8th grade. Mr. Aguilada and Mrs. Peterson will be sharing these three slides.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, Mr. Nieto, members of the board.
Good evening.
Before you, we have some preliminary reports, and the reason I do say preliminary, because the cut scores aren't final until July of the summer when we get all the data and everything's calculated. But we do have some breakdowns from our district, region, and state. And before I do continue with that, I do wanna recognize our campus principals, our campus staff, all our teachers, and our CNI, because they work extremely hard every day, you know? They really, really work hard with our boys and girls and trying to get them up to par, you know, as best as they can. What you have before you right now is you have a breakdown with the elementary and the middle schools. And you see a comparison, if you recall, we talked about, this is our second year coming in with the domains. You know, we used to have the indexes before, so if you look at 19, math, you have Approaches, Meets, and Masters, and the key numbers to remember is a 90, 60, 30 that we wanna look at and be in comparison to that. So if you're looking at West Laco ISD for our first round, we had 89% in 5th grade reading at the Approaches. The region was at 88, so we were one point above the region, and, excuse me, I'm sorry, in math. One point above the region in math, and we were six points above the state in the math. Then I'm gonna jump over, I'm not gonna read all the columns, but I'm gonna jump over to the reading. If you look at the Approaches, we were at 79 for this year. One point below the region, but three, two points above the state, as you can see that moving across. And then I'll turn it over to Ms. Peterson with the middle schools.
And the middle school math performance is very strong, significantly ahead of the region and the state at all three levels, Approaches, Meets, and Masters. Reading, we had increases over last year, but we are still running behind the region in all three categories. But we did increase performance over last year.
Next slide we have, this is a comparison from 5th to 5th. As we can see here, we do have different groups of kids. So on the next slide, we'll compare the cohorts as we're looking at this. There is an asterisk missing here from Madre Vara, you have two campuses with an asterisk, just in case you're wondering why that is. There were the students, it did take in all our other students from FDR. So that was a transition with the staff and the students, and they had a considerable amount of those. So they did a wonderful job, you know, working with them this year, and as you're seeing the comparisons there. So again, we're looking at the math, we're looking at the 90, 60, 30 for Approaches, Meets, and Masters. And as you're, you're looking at, you see the gains there, or some of them were equal, or some took a slight dip on what we're looking at. So you see the comparison for the math, and then you see the comparison for the reading, for the 19 and 18 school year.
And on the middle schools, you see there were a lot of good increases at the middle schools in almost every single category. And again, I wanna commend the classroom teachers who are working very hard with our students every single day, the principals and campus facilitators, and also our strategists who are spending a significant amount of time in the classroom and on the campuses with our staff. So solid increases are almost in every category for the middle schools.
So this last slide, what you're seeing, this is Domain 2, Part A on our accountability. So one of the things that we always work with our students and the way the state rolled out everything is with the growth mindset that we're looking at. So if we're looking at, for example, here in math, you have 2008 4th grade students where they ended off last year with their star administration in math, and this is where, how, where the increase was this year with our students. So you see those right there for the Approaches, Meets, and Masters. Same thing for the reading, you're looking at the same cohort of students where they scored in 2018 in every performance level, and where you saw the, the growth, you know, pretty much for every campus, sir.
And again, this is first administration, so these students that did not pass the first administration test again today in math, and will test tomorrow in reading. So again, at the middle schools, very solid performance in math and some good increases for the cohorts. In reading, we do have some areas we're concerned about, but we're tracking it closely. And again, they do have an oppor, another opportunity to test. And we do have reports of multiple students missing it by one or two questions. So we expect increases at the Approaches, possibly the Meets. Unfortunately, we'll not see a significant change at the Masters. But when you take all of your 8th grade reading performance, the English 1 students will figure into that for 8th grade reading, and that will boost that level, because many of the students taking English 1 and also Algebra 1 score at the Meets and Masters level. So again, commending the campuses for all their hard work.
I did wanna share a copy so you can see what the parents received, snippets, some of the muriaries submitted with them. These are little snippets from the report cards that every child and parent can see. And what you see there before you is two samples, and this is gonna be safe for all campuses. What you see there is two samples, where you see on the top right, you see a child, it doesn't have any names up there, but you see for reading, and you see did not meet expectations on the very first one. But if you jump to the other side, you see where it says accelerated growth. So one of the things that we have to look at, and you see those two little balloons where one's one at the bottom and the other looks like a little seesaw, and you see that growth. So if you look at the accelerated growth model, what the state is saying is they grew above their potential where they were at or where they were expected. So that's a very, that's a common trend that we're looking at with all the campuses, is there was a lot of growth even though a child may have not passed. And we're looking at, you know, those growth models. So every child that takes a state assessment receives a report card like this, and parents see this. So sometimes they'll call and they'll question. I know when we had our training with our parents, we had over 600 parents, so we try to clarify a lot of this information for them, because we're looking at the growth mindset, and we see that with accelerated growth. So just wanted to share little snippets. Also, the second one that you see down there is a student that had Masters and Masters as well. And that one, you see a sample there where a student sees accelerated growth, and you see those. You have any questions at this time?
I wanna make a couple of commendations here, because on your behalf, you've done an excellent job, both you and Mrs. Peterson, and of course, the principals and the teachers. Because when I looked at the Masters and Meets, almost every area increased from last year. And I like that it, all in green means you increased, that just makes it easier for us to read.
Yes, sir.
So awesome job, congratulations. And again, we'll have those other testers that will be part of the accountability later on.
Yes, correct, sir. They were testing today, and they're gonna test tomorrow. We should be having all the data in about mid-June with all our, everything in. And you'll be having those reports in the June board meeting.
Any other comments, Dr. Rivera?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that your 5th and 8th grade approaches with the math, we've always done well in math. It's been kind of historical. So good, good job, you all continuing, doing the good job in math. And the reading also, and the approaches. In the, in the elementary, you have, you have three, three in the green. And then in the, in reading, Approaches. And in the middle schools, you had in green, three or four. So that's, that's very good in both areas. And again, I just, I know we score higher in math than reading, but somehow that's the one you really have to hit from now on, this year, next year, and get those readings to be where the math is.
Yes, sir. And we're working on that, sir.
I know you are.
Yes, sir.
Was there, I noticed that with the middle schools, there was a decrease in the, in the upper levels, like in the, in the Meets and in the Masters. Was there, was the test harder, or is it just, what explains the, the decrease in the percentages?
It's hard to narrow it down to one reason. So we haven't, they've been working very hard with the students who did not pass. Later we'll sit and analyze more of the detail of the data as to why we had that decrease at that level, because a lot of those students probably did pass the test. And we have access to every student's test, and we can see what they marked as wrong answers. So we'll get, once we have time to go back into all of the tests, we'll be analyzing the data with more detail.
Okay.
And the rigor of the test does come into question to analyze, along with a scale score and the raw score for the cut scores. But we're, you know, if you look at the very, very first slide, we're competitive with the state and the region, in some cases beating the state and the region. And so a lot, a lot of hard work on understanding this year. Our principals have done a tremendous job with the accountability system knowledge, the data pieces. We're creating a culture where younger children are enjoying reading and even going to sleep. But won't go to sleep until, you know, "Mom, I need to read, I can't go to sleep," until I read. To just create a love of reading, to hit what Dr. Rivera was saying, we know that literacy is the, is the key to success. There's tons of research out there that shows if you read for a certain amount of time every evening, you're gonna be at the top, very, very top, 90% and above in performance. So we're creating that culture. Our principals have worked really, really hard. Sometimes they come to meetings, they look tired, they still have a very positive look in their face, like, "Let's march on." And same thing with our teachers and everybody. So, you know, we're marrying the, the region, the state. We wanna be better than the region and the state, and we will be. I mean, very, very strong, committed team. And so we're excited, and we'll be analyzing, I know, throughout the summer. Both Mrs. Peterson and Mr. Aguilada already have said, "Canales, we didn't meet on these dates with our principals on the data," and, and I'm planning for, for next year.
Okay.
Good job.
It looks like A's, right, for our school?
That's what we're aiming for, sir, straight A's.
Looks like A's, yeah.
Straight A's.
I know you tested, I know you tested this week. Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for the last piece of the report, we have the insurance program. Mr. De La Rosa.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, Mr. Niotto, members of the board. This is the standard insurance slide that, uh, we present monthly and I'm going to go ahead and approximate, uh, the numbers here. So as far as medical claims paid September first through April thirtieth, uh, last year at this time, we're at six point five million dollars, uh, versus this year at this time, we're at seven point five million dollars. So that's approximately, uh, approximately one million dollar increase. Uh, same thing for prescription drugs. Last year at this time, we're at two point two million dollars versus this year, we're just right over three million dollars. Uh, we have seen an increase there as well, approximately eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Our fixed costs have remained, uh, pretty flat, uh, over the last year. It's only a fifty thousand dollar increase. So total, uh, last year, we're at ten point seven million dollars versus this year, we're at twelve point six. That's an approximate two million dollar increase this year over last year, uh, in medical claims. So just a couple of, uh, tidbits on that. Uh, the high cost claimants through March, uh, this time last year, we had ten and these are individuals that have, uh, racked up over fifty thousand dollars in medical claims. Uh, this year, that, that number has doubled, we're at twenty. Uh, so those twenty high class claimants accounted for thirty-four point five percent of the total medical spend this year on the plan, so approximately six point five million.
So what's driving the costs is we have a select group of employees that are, have a high medical claims.
There's an increase, that is correct, an increase of, uh, high dollar or over fifty thousand dollar, uh, claims.
Okay.
Um, so just to kind of, as I mentioned last month, we're, we're, we're kind of trending a little higher than we thought we were. Uh, when we brought this for renewal last year, uh, TPA estimated that we'd be at about nine point eight or nine point nine million dollars in projected net claims. And of course, uh, you take the admin fees were projected, stop loss premiums, everything like that. Uh, so we ended up at approximately sixteen point three million dollars. So if y'all remember last year, we, uh, increased the budget for the health insurance, we raised employee contributions, uh, to about twenty-five percent. We also, uh, raised district contributions. So we came up with about seventeen point one, seventeen point two million dollars just to kind of build us a little cushion. This year, uh, as you've seen, we've seen a couple, uh, some significant increases in medical claims, so we're predicting that we're going to end up at about eighteen million dollars this year. So we're going to be about a million, a million and a half short, uh, from what we budgeted from this year for last year. So, uh, just want to make the board aware of that now. Uh, so we are looking at a potential budget shortfall in the health insurance again.
By how much?
A little early right now, but it's about a million, million, million and a half. So we've kind of, if the last, uh, where it says estimated, the last column here, we've estimated the, the rest of the medical claims that we're going to be paying out. Uh, the admin fees, we know what they are, we know what the stop loss premiums are. Uh, so again, the estimated RX, we're, uh, getting approximate average of that. So really what's driving this is the claims.
Mike, for the update, can you put sixteen, seventeen, uh, this last slide you have here with the claims, can you just, in the update, just kind of include sixteen, seventeen, please?
Sure. Total, the end of the year?
The way you have it here, seventeen, eighteen was ten and right now we're at twenty.
Okay.
So you can just show sixteen, seventeen, please.
We can do that.
So I'm assuming that with, uh, the increase for next year, since we're going to be working the budget this summer, I'm assuming also we're going to have to increase our allocation for, uh, insurance for next year, correct?
Yes, sir. There's an agenda item in the meeting too that talks about the third party administrative services and what we're looking at, claims for next year. So, the short answer is yes.
Okay.
Mike, so you're seeing, uh, twenty employees accounted for thirty-five, are counting for about thirty-five percent?
Yes, of the total spend, which is six point five million dollars on this claim.
That's a lot.
Um, just to clarify that, yeah. That's, and this is, and this data I have, and if you see, there's a little discrepancy, but this data that they provided me is only through, um, the end of February. So I already have data, uh, through the end of April. So that's why they say six point five million, but that Blue Cross lags in the reports that I get a little bit, so that's the reason for this. It's not six point five million for them.
Put it in the update, please.
We can do that.
We can, we can do that.
Uh, moving forward with the self-funded working, uh, work comp, workers' compensation program, uh, this year versus last year, uh, we've had eighty-three claims last year versus this year of eighty-four. Uh, last year we paid, uh, approximately fifty-one thousand dollars. This year we're at one thirty-six. Uh, so if you move over to the incurred and what's the funds that we have to put in reserve for, to cover these claims, last year we're at a hundred and seven thousand, uh, this year we're at two hundred and twenty-one, seven eighty-five, twenty-five. Uh, and even as you can see, the claims are almost identical. Uh, the reason for the increase is the severity of the workers' comp claims. We've had a few. Uh, we had one, uh, auto accident that we had earlier in the year and then we had another, uh, pedestrian auto incident. So those, uh, we have to set aside a little more and, and reserves for them. But overall, we're still doing, uh, very well on the work comp side. And that is all I have, if anybody has any other questions.
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. De La Rosa.
Item number ten, consent agenda, Dr. Gonzalez. Any, uh, any, uh, items we need to pull out, uh, Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Dr. Rodriguez?
No.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I'm good.
Dr. Rivera?
Let me just locate L. Just for clarification, L.
Okay. Mr. Lopez?
I have nothing.
Okay. Coach Quay?
No.
None?
All right. I move to approve the consent agenda, accepting item L.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Gonzalez, to approve the consent agenda except for L.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. Uh, item number L, approval of budget amendment? Just for, Andres, just for clarification.
Yes, sir.
You got all, you got local maintenance and these are, are you going function to function? Because you got local maintenance on this, is that your fund balance?
Uh, on, on which?
On the, you know, on the...
The second set of the...
There's eight of these and they have local maintenance.
It's a, to a different function.
That's what I mean. You don't, you don't have those functions from this function to this function.
Yes, that, that's what I did. The ones for fund balance are in the next section. These are all, we're going from eleven to thirty-six or twenty-three, function like that, like, uh, twenty-three to thirteen, for example.
So on what pages? For different functions?
On the following pages.
Following page?
Pages forty-nine, it's the, the back end for the, for state.
Oh, yes.
Can you show the account numbers where they're going from?
Yeah, that's the one that I was looking for, from function to function. Okay, I'm okay. You okay with that? All right.
Dr. Rivera?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Rivera, a second by Mr. Gonzalez, to approve, uh, the consent agenda L. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries.
Discussion items, uh, item eleven, a interim financial report for eight months ended April thirty, two thousand nineteen. Dr. Canales?
Board of trustees, this is a no action item and it's just the interim financial report for the eight months ended April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Mr. Sanchez.
Yes, Mr. Nieto, Dr. Canales, members of the board, for the eight months ended April thirty, two thousand nineteen in the general fund, we have revenues budgeted, uh, a hundred and sixty-nine million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand. We have received a hundred and twenty-six point eight million, which represents seventy-four point sixty-five percent. And on the budget for expenditures, we have budgeted a hundred and seventy-five million, three hundred and nineteen thousand. We, we have expended or encumbered one hundred and eleven million, which represents sixty-three point twenty-seven percent. There is a function, uh, function thirty-four transportation that we are currently at eighty-three percent. There is a function that is getting close to, uh, running out of budget. So in the June board meeting, we'll bring in a budget amendment to increase their budget basically for payroll, like we did last year.
Which, which item did you say on that?
Uh, function thirty-four.
Oh, okay.
The other, the other functions are okay.
Just one, Andres, just a, just a question here. From this, from this budget?
Uh-huh.
What do you anticipate, um, after August thirty-first as far as the fund balance from all these accounts? Do you have more or less an estimate?
Well, um, the, the function eleven, it is what to come up with, you know, we're looking at about three to four million dollars, the surplus that we have and the other, we're still working with them because right now at eight months, that represents sixty-six point six percent and the latter number at sixty-six or fifty-four, sixty-nine, sixty-four, sixty-four, sixty-two, they're pretty close.
So the big one really is eleven? Yes. That means you were over budgeted or you reduced them or both?
No, uh, we have some vacancies that we haven't filled.
Vacancies?
Vacancies that we haven't filled, yes.
Okay.
The biggest number, yes.
So we'll have a cushion there?
A cushion?
At the end, right?
Well, yeah, it is, it is, yes, because we haven't filled it.
All right.
How much are you gonna, how much are you gonna have to add to function thirty-four?
Well, we'll have a better idea at the end of the month, in May, because we have some money in repairs that we haven't used and so we'll, after we finish the payroll for May, which is most of the payroll for the year, we'll have a better idea and then we'll come up in June.
Okay. And we have, we have summer school all the way to when, Dr. Gonzalez?
Summer school and children.
The last thing to June is the end of the OCs.
Okay. So we provide, yeah. We provide transportation in the summer for those students that attend summer school, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, item B, acknowledgement of Hidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for March two thousand nineteen and April two thousand nineteen, current taxes and delinquent taxes. Dr. Canales?
Board of trustees, uh, we're just recommending that you acknowledge the Hidalgo County Tax Office Collection Reports for March twenty nineteen and April twenty nineteen for current and delinquent taxes as prepared by the Hidalgo County Tax Assessor Collector. So the report is before you for twenty nineteen. Mr. Sanchez, if you'll just highlight some key points.
Andres, your budget is based on what, on delinquents?
Uh, twenty percent, twenty, we budgeted twenty percent of the delinquents.
Twenty percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're, you're a little lower on that one?
Yes, yeah, we still have some money. Uh, usually the delinquents come in later in June, July and August.
Okay, and your current?
And the current, we've already exceeded it.
What was it?
We budgeted at ninety-one.
Ninety-one?
Yes. We went over a little bit, so we still have four months to go. That's what I was talking about, from the property tax, we'll be able to have a surplus.
You're at ninety-two right now?
Uh, about ninety-one and a half as of April thirty. This is the amount in the...
Okay.
Tax roll, the budget we use is whatever's there, we take ninety-one percent to, to budget and twenty for the delinquent taxes.
Okey-dokey. Questions? No comments? Anything else, Dr. Canales?
For that one?
Okay. Thank you, Andres. Item C, discussion on, uh, board operating procedures. Dr. Canales?
Board of trustees, this is discussion only, um, at the December eleventh, twenty eighteen, when we had the team building, um, and after that, we were asked to develop some board operating procedures. Mr. Garcia, uh, assisted with that and we did look at several school districts that the board operating procedures drafted some, included, um, the first draft, which did involve our legal counsel, uh, in the March twenty-ninth board update. This, you have them before you, uh, and just before we finalize, these are intents, if it is your direction to complete them before, uh, the summer in June, to bring them back in June for approval.
These were on the update, right?
They were, yes, sir.
Okay.
So it's discussion only?
Any, uh, comments, questions, uh, on the board operating procedures from any of the board members? It wasn't our update, so...
None in the update.
And it's pretty, uh, it's the same as prior years.
Comments, if you want to look at them before June, if you have any feedback, please just call me or Mr. Garcia and then we can finalize them for June.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just any, any recommendations for this new guy on the, the board? Areas that I need to really, really focus on?
All of it.
Every bit of it. No, I understand that, but I'm asking the question.
Just get familiar and of course, if you have a question, ask one of the other board members and they'll, uh, they'll assist you.
Yeah, because a lot of times everything isn't really just black and white.
Correct.
There's a lot of, a lot of real gray line stuff, so, uh, I just want to make sure that I'm in compliance with, with the law.
Uh, and Board of Trustees, board operating procedures is something that comes recommended and for people in the audience, it's a, uh, it assists the board with promoting the district's vision and goals and, uh, West Coast ISD, we commend the board for, you know, requesting that procedures be in place. Um, so we'll bring them to you in June, so just thank you.
All right. No action item, right, correct?
No action.
All right. Item number twelve. Item A, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to change the regular board meeting schedule on July eighth, two thousand nineteen. Dr. Canales?
Board of trustees, in July, the second Monday of the month is July eighth, twenty nineteen, which is the first day of summer vacation for some staff. Uh, administrative staff is recommending that the July eighth, twenty nineteen board meeting be rescheduled to one of the following dates, Monday, July twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, the preferred date, or Monday, July first, twenty nineteen.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
The preferred date, Monday, July twenty-ninth.
All right, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Mr. Andrew Gonzalez to change the regular board meeting to July twenty-ninth, correct?
Yes, July twenty-ninth.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion carries. Item B, discussion, discussion and possible action to approve the revision to policy FDB local admissions, intra-district transfers and classroom assignments. Dr. Canales?
Board of trustees, we're recommending your approval for this policy. If we recall, last month, we pulled it. We did have a meeting, Mrs. Peterson, Mr. Aguilar, Mr. Garcia and, and I to look at it. There's basically two minor changes. One of them is superintendent or designee and that's on page one and the second change is a revocation of transfers to include violations of compulsory attendance laws, uh, CFE legal and regulations include in the student code of conduct and other district publications. So this is for out-of-district transfers.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by, uh, Dr. Heimlich?
Yes.
And a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the revision to policy FDB emissions, intra-district transfers and classroom assignments. Any discussion?
Did the principals have, uh, input on this, Dr. Canales?
Mr. Lopez, the, the, the impetus behind this came from our principals who were dealing
Mr. Lopez, the, the, the impetus behind this came from our principals who were dealing with some opportunities for out-of-district transfers.
Okay. That's a yes, sir?
It's a yes, 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 yes.
Mr. Guay?
What, what grade levels are we talking about?
All grade levels, sir.
All grade levels?
Any out-of-district transfer.
Well, all UIL, rules being applied when, because residency becomes an issue?
Yes, sir, when they're, when they're coming into the district.
All that will be looked at very carefully.
Yes, sir. You may have to come over here.
That's a good point, Coach Cuellar, because like middle school or high school transfers, the residency comes into play.
It's on the second page.
This is, this is for the intra-district transfers. These are for the students that are transferring within, from one campus to the other.
Yes, on the second page, it shows up the URL eligibility.
I, I see that there.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All against, motion carries. Item number C, discussion and possible actions to submit a nomination from within our local board to fill a position on the TASB Board of Directors or endorse a nominated individual from another board in our region at the July or August board meeting. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, this is an invitation to you to submit a nomination from within our school board to fill a position on the TASB Board of Directors. Their position is currently held by Mrs. Cuellar from South Texas ISD. She has indicated that she will be seeking reelection. If you choose to be nominated, the term of this position is for three years, beginning of the close of the 2019 TASA TASB Convention, expiring after the convention in 2022. There are some duties for the TASB Board of Directors that are included there. You attend four meetings, you serve in a standing committee. So the TASB is accepting nominations of individuals that must be submitted by Monday, July 1st, 2019. So this is for any of you that may want to.
Any other board men, board members interested?
No, but I'll nominate, I want to nominate Oscar Driolhas from the Mercedes ISD School Board. So how do I, we can submit, I believe, Dr. Canales?
You endorse his board has to do it or?
The item says to nominate from within our local board.
Just within, yes.
I didn't see that part, can't see it.
There'll be another one.
There'll be another one.
His board has to nominate.
We'll get it back, yeah. Okay, it's fine. So then it will be a no-action item?
If nobody's interested from our board, it's a no-action.
Andrew, you ready?
Am I, I'm always ready, but no.
Okay.
So it's a no-action item?
No-action item, Ivan?
Right, if you, if you're not going to nominate somebody from within the board, then you can endorse at one of the next two regular meetings.
A later.
So item C is a no-action item.
All right, let's go to item D. Discussion of possible action for the board to consider renewal of the district's agreement with ARIA RX to provide pharmacy benefit management, management services, PBM, for the district self-funded employee benefit program for fiscal year 2019, 2020, or authorize administrations to solicit proposals for the same. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, this is year two of three. And the administration is recommending to renew the, our agreement with ARIA RX to provide pharmacy benefit management services to, for the district self-funded employee benefit plan for 2019, 2020. And Mr. De La Rosa is here to answer any questions that you may have.
We've been, we've been with ARIA this past year?
Yes, just one year, sir.
And is the cost increasing this year or?
The cost of the drugs, we have spent more, as I mentioned, on the superintendent's report on the cost of drugs. However, as you can see throughout the news media, the, the number of high-dollar claims that we have corresponds with the number of, or the higher cost of the drugs that we're, we're paying out. Just to give the board some, some reference, we have chemotherapy drugs that run approximately seventeen thousand dollars a month. Oral diabetes medications that run six to a thousand dollars a month and one that's at thirteen thousand a month. So there is a significant cost. What we're doing, or what we'd like to do if we're, if we can renew is we have two programs that we're looking at implementing for next year. And one of them is the International Pharmacy Program. So this would be a specialty program where employees can get high-dollar specialty medications such as Embrel. You always see the commercials for that, that runs about forty-eight hundred dollars.
Mike, is ARIA, I know we had on a certain medication that would or would not be covered and then they're the ones that picked up the bill?
On that particular one, the manufacturer picked up the bill.
The manufacturer.
Is that part of the Pharmax program, the second?
That's part of the Pharmax program, correct. And we're looking to implement for next year.
Mike, do you know what other districts use ARIA here in the valley?
I believe Sheraland ISD utilizes ARIA.
Anybody else?
Anybody else, Roger? No, just us.
I'll make a motion to approve the district's recommendation.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. You have a second?
I'll second.
Who is that, Dr. Jaime? We have a motion by Mr. Andrew Gonzalez and a second by Dr. Jaime to consider renewal of the district's agreement with ARIA RX. Any discussion?
I, I'd personally like to see us go out for bid. I remember last year when we went out for, requested proposals, we only got two backed. And I think they're ARIA and something else, but I understand that the board wants to go, keep on with ARIA, but that's my personal opinion.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E. Discussion of possible action for the board to consider renewal of the district's agreement with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas to administer the district's self-funded employee benefit program for the fiscal year 2019, 20, or authorize administrations to solicit proposals for the same. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, this coming year would be year three for the renewal option. The administration and superintendent after meeting with administration recommends that the board renew the district's agreement with Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Texas to administer the district's self-funded employee benefit program for next school year. This is the third and final renewal option. Administration fees remain unchanged, but Blue Cross Blue Shield is projecting an increase of about two hundred, two million, not two hundred million, two million in net paid claims. And this is some of the information that was provided earlier in the super report. So Mr. De La Rosa is here, if you have any questions that we may answer.
I guess the thing I'd like to know about Blue Cross is the cost that Blue Cross is charging us for their services is not going up. It's the cost of the claims
Correct.
employees are making that's driving the cost, is that right?
That's correct, the administrative fees for Blue Cross, we get, we're getting a rate pass on that, so that's not changing.
Okay, I guess the only other concern I have is are they being flexible with our employees to provide the coverage that our employees need?
Well, basically, we, we, the district designs the, the plan design, so of course, there's three different plans and really, we set what benefits we offer as far as the district-wide, the district does. So they're administering the plan according to our design.
Oh, I see, okay, so we have to be flexible for our employees to?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Dr. Jaime, correct? And a second by Mr. Lopez to consider renewal of the district's agreement with Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Texas. Any discussion?
Yes.
I have a lot of friends that, that work in the district and in conversation, they have nothing but praise the insurance that we have right now. Very happy with what we currently have and then remember what we've had in the past and, and happy where we're, where we're at today. So that, that is the reason I second the motion.
Okay.
So on the flip side, I think we all get calls, some like the old, some like the new. My, my only concern obviously is the one thing we can't predict are the, are the claims. I think with our last carrier, we got hit when we were hit high and then Blue Cross came in and was able to save us, but obviously our claims were very low and now they're getting hit again, high. You know, Mike, I, I think, Dr. Canales, you, you have to let the, the staff know that we've increased our, our, the district's portion in the last two years. The employees have increased their, what they have to pay.
Twenty-five.
And the only way you're going to hit twenty million dollars unless Andres has cash that we don't know about
Which he doesn't.
is to probably increase again the district's contribution along with the staff's contribution. You know, it, it hurts some, but at the same time, it is providing, you know, coverage for their families, those that, that are enrolled in the family. You know, you, you really, when you look about, you know, you see the other districts and I know I've, I've requested that information, you know, we're, we're still on the lower end, you know, with what contributions our, our staff have to provide. We just got to let them know ahead of time so that they can make preparations to, to plan for the future as far as what it may cost them.
And we'll have to bring this back again for the increase later on, once we get more claim data.
And that's fine, we, we just got to let, let our staff know, you know. I, I think, again, Blue Cross is, is doing us a favor by, by not increasing the admin fees. And so that, that is great, we just got to be prepared, you know, I don't, I think we've just underfunded the, the health insurance side for the last several years. But, you know, Mike, let them know, you know, thanks on not increasing their fees, so that, that's going to help some.
I agree with that.
And hopefully, we just have a good year coming here that, that our claims are a little lower and we may not hit those twenty million dollars.
I agree, but it was Mr. Gonzalez that we let our employees know. And of course, you know, we've got to look at over, the overall picture. We're still one of the highest paid in salaries, but we always have provided good health insurance. But sometimes the employees have to increase a little bit, so we'll still, we'll take care of them and we'll go forward.
Mike, maybe you can get that, that, that that information, where the other districts?
Yes, sir.
You know, just so they can see how, how really good of a plan they have, you know, and just with, with the small contribution that they're making, so.
And I'll send the board that info in the update.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, Dr. Rivera?
No.
Okay. You're right. All right, we have a motion by Dr. Jaime and a second by Mr. Lopez to consider renewal of the district's agreement with Blue Cross, Blue Shield. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All against, motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
And Ivan, I guess this is for you. On item C, I would like to revisit if possible with a, take the vote with a show of hands, if that is possible.
On which one?
Item C. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, the one with the pharmacy benefits.
Okay. Is that okay?
That's, that's up to you, Mr. Nieto, if you want to.
Go back.
You run in the meeting as the board president, you can.
Okay.
That would be item D.
Item D, we had a motion by Mr. Andrew Gonzalez, a second by Dr. Jaime to consider renewal of the district's agreement with ARIA. We had, okay, well, we're, all those in favor, raise your hand, please.
Let me ask one question here on, on D. Okay, so the, so the item is to go ahead and approve or to go out and solicit proposals? Right?
Yes, sir.
Or?
Okay. The recommendation was to renew.
Is, is to renew.
Yes, sir.
And this is, this is the second year?
Yes, sir, year two.
Would it be advantageous to go ahead and go out for proposals and maybe get a better deal?
I think in this case, Dr. Rivera, it's just like the health insurance. What's driving the cost is the price of the drugs. Right now, we have a transparent plan with ARIA, so they disclose everything that's being paid, that the district has to pay. There's no hidden costs, there's no spread cost, everything is, is transparent. Two, last year, we went out to, for proposals and, and, and Mr. Kennedy, we got about seven of them for the PBM. Two was the stop loss. Well, the problem is, is when you change year to year, it causes a lot of disruption for employees as far as being able to get their medication. So when we already have pre-authorizations on file for these high-class drugs, so if we change, then all those pre-authorizations have to get redone again by the new carrier, so it does cause a lot of disruption. At this point, I don't see that there's any, you know, issues as far as transparency.
But they might still come out with a better proposal. The firm you have right now, we're not saying we're going to change it.
It's, it's possible.
Well, we have a.
Well, I, I guess the question that I have is, are we on item D? Did you recall item D?
Yes.
It is item D.
Okay.
Item D, I went back.
So then I'd, I'd ask if, before there's a, a hand, just recognizing the hand, you want to know who voted which way, in favor and against?
Just want to make the vote clear.
Okay. Okay, and what I'd suggest, Mr. Nieto, is maybe you read off those that you had voting in favor and those against. And because it's not a revote, you're not voting over, it's, it's to
To clarify.
reflect what you, what, the, the way the board voted initially.
Okay.
So if I voted, if I voted yes?
I voted yes.
And I do about no?
This isn't a revote, now, if they're, again, if, if somebody wants to move to, to rescind the prior action, then, you know, the board could consider that, but.
Let me clarify, because the question by Mr. Lopez was see who voted for. Voted for was Dr. Jaime, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Rivera, Mr. Cuellar, and myself, five. And the two against were Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Lopez.
Okay.
That was a clarification.
Then is it possible to rescind?
Yeah.
If, if Mr. Nieto wants to recognize, you know, revisiting this item and, and having somebody make a motion to rescind, then.
Let's re, let's revisit and see.
Now, we're looking at, at, at the possibility of getting a better deal.
Or we could get a worst, a worse deal.
You don't know what you're going to get.
Now, once, once, once we bid, then whatever we have that's going to be on the board is null and void. If we go out for, for a bid.
If you go out for proposals, yes, then this offer that we have is off the table from ARIA. And then all the, the Pharmax program and the pharmacy, the international pharmacy are options that we'd have to restart the process if we go out to bid and another PBM is selected.
But going out for bid doesn't terminate the contract that we currently have with ARIA. We could reject the bids if we got a worse and just renew the.
We have to give them a tentative notice of non-renewal. If, if we don't, if we don't renew it today, so in essence, whatever offer we have on the table right now is, is, is off.
Correct.
Mike, so you already started discussions with, with ARIA on the international RX and the farm?
Yes, sir, we'd have to bring another item to you probably in June to revamp the pharmacy program. For example, on the international pharmacy program, if you, most of these drugs are made overseas anywhere in Europe. So, and you always see those, and you've heard in the news how the, how the overseas market is actually a lot cheaper, but it's the same drug, so we would have to incentivize the employee to go and get these from an international pharmacy for about half the cost.
How far along are you in that process?
We pretty much just need to finalize the, the benefit change. So say zero co-pay versus if you get it on overseas versus maybe consider increasing the co-pay if you just want to get it here locally. So kind of like an incentive to do it, so.
And I think we had already voted and we just needed a clarification, so.
Yep. Mr. President, I make a motion to rescind the vote on item D and go out for a revote.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Lopez to rescind item D. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by Dr. Rivera.
And, and it's actually, it's not to rescind item D, but are you saying to rescind
Vote.
the votes, the, the board's previous vote on item D?
Yes, sir.
We can do that?
Yeah.
Okay. So all those in favor to rescind item D, please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
We got three to rescind it? We got five, all right? And five to rescind it. I vote against, Mr. Gonzalez, against, okay. All right, let's go visit back to item D. Discussion of possible action for the board to consider renewal of the district's agreement with ARIA RX to provide pharmacy benefit management services for the district's self-funded employee benefit program for fiscal year 1920 or to authorize administrations to solicit proposals for the same.
Make a motion to authorize administration to solicit, to solicit proposals for same. Second.
Who was second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lopez and a second by Mr. Cuellar to authorize administrations to solicit proposals for the same. All those in favors, please say aye.
I have discussion.
Aye.
Oh, discussion first, please, my fault. Discussion.
Mike, just offhand, do you remember a few of those companies that proposed the last thing?
There's about seven or eight of them, you had ARIA, you had the incumbent, I know, Roger, you worked on that, do you remember? Max Care out of I can get you, I can get all, get you all the list and put it in the app, but those are the ones that I can remember off the top of my head, but it's about seven or eight companies.
Does Blue Cross, Blue Shield do this?
They do, it's a company called Prime Therapeutics that does, and they did not submit last year, that I do remember.
Okay, any other discussion? So I have a motion by Mr. Lopez and a second by Mr. Cuellar to go authorize administrations to solicit proposals for the same. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, so motion carries. All right?
So we're, so we're going out for?
Going out for proposal. We're okay with that, Ivan?
Yes.
Okay, item number F, discussion and possible action for the board to consider, consider renewal of the district's group dental insurance with Lincoln Financial Group through Salazar Insurance Group and the Discussion of possible action for the board to consider, consider renewal of the district's group dental insurance with Lincoln Financial Group through Salazar Insurance Group and Tamez Financial Group for the fiscal year nineteen twenty or to authorize administrations to solicit proposals for the same. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, Lincoln's renewal came in at a six-point-five percent rate increase for year three. The district administration feels it would be important to test the market for a more competitive rate for employee and the district premium. So we are recommending for this one to solicit proposals for group dental insurance.
I'll make a motion, districts, um, to go out for proposals. On the dental.
I have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion dies. I have another motion.
What's the, um, what's the, the cost increase per, is it, am I seeing it right, Mike? Is it nine eighty-six to?
Ten fifty.
Correct. And that's, uh, for the, uh, the district's portion. Then of course, uh, everybody else that has dependents or selects a higher plan, uh, they will see an increase as well.
Do I have a motion for, uh, another motion? Discussion of possible action for the board to consider renewal of the district's group's dental insurance with Lincoln Financial Group through Salazar Insurance Group and Tamez Financial Group.
Make a motion to continue with the same insurance we have right now.
So we have a motion by Mr. Lopez. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Coach Cuéllar. To renew, uh, district's group dental insurance with Lincoln Financial Group through Salazar Insurance Group and Tamez Financial Group for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike, have you had any issues, uh, with, um, president insurance right now?
No, sir. No, sir.
That is good. Okay.
But particular, only reason was the cost.
Comments on the left side?
What's, uh, in previous years, what's been the increase in the costs, Mike?
It's been pretty consistent over the last few years. However, when we went out to bid in, uh, twenty sixteen, uh, we were paying approximately ten forty, uh, a month, the district's costs towards the insurance. Lincoln came in and, and pretty much, um, offered us a very, very low rate, it was very advantageous, so we took it. Uh, they did come up with an increase last year, but it was still what we used to pay, so we took it. And then this year, uh, they came up a little bit more, uh, so over our benchmark was, which is at ten forty. So there's a lot of other companies out there that do this and we felt it would be prudent to test the market. And this is a true insurance product. It's a transfer of risk.
Any other discussion? We have a motion by Mr. Lopez and a second by Coach Cuéllar to renewal of the district's group dental insurance with Lincoln Financial Group through Salazar Insurance Group. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against? Motion carries. Item G. Uh, discussion of possible action for the board to consider, consider renewal of the district's employee paid term life, AD&amp;D life insurance with Dearborn National Life Insurance through the inter-local participation agreement with the Texas Educational Employees Benefit Cooperative, TEEPC, or to authorize administration to solicit proposals for the same.
I move to renew.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy.
A second.
And we have a second by Dr. Jaime to renew the district employee's paid term life insurance with Dearborn, uh, National Life Insurance. Any discussion? All the, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. Item H. Discussion of possible action for the board to consider renewal of the district's students' accident insurance, athletic catastrophic voluntary, with student insurance plans underwritten by Catlin Insurance Company for the school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, or to authorize administration to solicit proposals for the same. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we are recommending on this one to renew the district's student accidents insurance policy with student insurance plans underwritten by Catlin Insurance Company for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. This covers insurance, uh, for students in the event of injury while participating in UIL sanctioned activities.
The, um, this plan was, um, was picked up la- last year at a higher cost than a, uh, plan that we had used previously, right?
It was a slight increase, yes, sir.
A slight increase, now. Given the information, I mean, the plan we had before, we never had any problems with that before.
The, um, the plan we had before, we went out to bid last year, uh, Coach Cuéllar, and, uh, there was a company that was selected. Uh, however, at the time, that company, uh, did not participate, uh, or NAP Medical Center was not in their network. This one was, so we had to, uh, I had to bring this item back and advise the board, uh, that, uh, the company that was originally selected was not in the NAP network while this one was.
Had it been a problem before?
It had not been a problem before, no. Apparently, they had a contract and they lost it and they were in the process of negotiating a new one.
This is a flat renewal, right?
Hmm?
Flat renewal?
This is a flat renewal, yes.
And we haven't had any problems with it?
No issues. No issues.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. To consider renewal of the district's students' accident insurance. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do I have a second by Dr. Jaime? Any discussion?
Mike, now, are student insurance? After their personal insurance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, are, are parents aware of that?
Yes, sir.
I know there's a form that's supposed to be signed, correct?
There's a meeting, um, Coach, uh, Riojas, who I consult with on this and the trainers, um, they don't have any problems with it. But every year, they come down and meet with the parents before the season starts. And they go over all the rules, you know, uh, what needs to happen, claim filing procedures. And yes, the, your, your primary, your insurance is primary.
Is primary.
This is secondary. You don't have any insurance and this is primary.
I remember last year, you said this was the Cadillac of, of insurance for our student athletes.
It, it's, it covers a wide range of things and they even cover the KATE students, uh, the students that participate in CTE.
In the CTE as well?
I think that's one of the comments Dr. Rivera made, there was a Cadillac insurance because it was for our athletes.
I believe the other one was a Cadillac. This one was the backup, and, uh.
The benefits are the same?
If I remember correctly, we had already approved the other insurance company.
That's correct.
And then for some odd reason, uh, information came to us, uh, during closed session.
Yes, correct.
That, uh, and we had to come back.
And NAP wasn't included.
NAP, NAP wasn't a part of their network.
Is NAP part of this one?
Yes.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr., Mr. Gonzalez, second by Dr. Jaime, to consider renewal of the district's students' accident insurance. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Dr. Jaime, Mr. Gonzalez. All those against?
Aye.
Aye.
Hang on, must know somebody.
Jesus. I'm with the against, so. Motion fails.
Yes, sir.
Correct? All right.
Mike, real quick, can I make comment? Real, by, so with this plan, same thing, you know, if, if it goes out, comes back higher, we can't go back to, to this one, correct?
That's correct, this is, renewal is off the table.
And so they could, but they can be, they can bid, right?
Oh, we can bid. I don't know, um, what it'll come, it could be higher, it could be lower, you just roll the dice. Normally, when things come in at a flat renew, we recommend a, a renewal.
Okay. So do I have a motion to go out for proposals?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Lopez to go out for proposals. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Coach Cuéllar. To go out for proposals, authorize administration. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against?
Aye.
And aye. So motion carries to solicit, uh, proposals. All right. Item I. Discussion of possible action for the board to consider approval of the administration's ranking, recommendation for the replacement of chillers and related equipment project at the Central Middle School Gymnasium and Annex AB. Uh, proposal number nineteen zero four twenty-nine. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we're recommending that you approve the administration's ranking of the proposals received for the replacement project of chillers and related equipment at Central Middle School Gym and Annex AMB to Airco Tech ACT Corp located in Alamo, Texas. They, as you can see, they were ranked number one. They are not the lowest bidder, there's two others that are lower. However, staff has informed me that the two lowest, lowest bidders, um, do not have the experience with HVACs. Is that correct? So the recommendation is for Airco Tech ACT Corp located in Alamo, Texas.
How much higher are they than the lowest two?
They're about, according to my math, twenty-eight, twenty-eight thousand? More than the lowest bidder, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The, the one at the bottom on the table, the lowest one. They got ranked number seven.
I've never heard of that company.
Which one?
Which one have you not heard of?
Airco.
Airco?
Airco Tech.
No, they are the one that did, uh, HVAC work at Silva Gonzalez and Kate during the summer. We approve it.
Do you all want to do?
I'll make another motion to accept the administration's recommendation. I don't think that's flown tonight, but try it anyways.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez to consider approval of administration's ranking recommendation for the replacement of chillers and related equipment at Central Middle School. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Dr. Jaime? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Dr. Jaime to approve the re, uh, administrative ranking for the replacement of chillers. Any discussion?
Yes. Andres, you said this company did Silva?
Gonzalez and Kate.
Gonzalez. Jososo?
And Calviu Kate.
Okay. And Medico, how is, how was their work?
It's good.
Good?
They, as far as their, uh, their, uh, their work ethic, uh, it's very good.
So you feel very comfortable with, with this recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is this the same type of work we're talking about?
This, this is, uh, chiller work over here, it's, it's a little bit different.
It's different, it's a lot different.
It's, yes, sir. Uh, we've got, uh, chill water, uh, system equipments. The reason that we're going with this company is primarily is because, again, the lack of experience that was provided by the other two companies. The other two companies are general contractors and all other companies who submitted bids are, they specialize in air conditioning, uh, system installations.
Mr., uh, go ahead, Coach Cuéllar.
Does this have anything to do with when we go off of the summer and come back to start school and then have to go through weeks and weeks of, of no, no cooling, uh, classrooms and, you know, and so forth? We've had this discussion before and, and, and I can recall when I was still working here, where we, we, we constantly had, you know, issues with, with these things. So the question is, you know, are you one hundred percent sure, you know, backing up this, this, uh, this work that we're going to get from them?
Yes, sir, based on our experience, yes. And they do have the experience and they specialize in, in, uh.
Because, I mean, we, you, you've been through it plenty.
Yes, sir.
So you would know.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, I think you had a question or a comment?
My question was, the paperwork that we received says that this, this bidder, it's not the low bidder, is specialized, but it doesn't, it leaves out the fact that the other low bidders are, don't have experience. I guess we're lacking experience.
Right.
Uh, I, that's what my question was.
Okay.
When, um, you said general contractors, so you know that they're going to be using subcontractors to be doing the, the actual work for, that needs to be done.
That is correct.
Did you find out who their subcontractors are going to be, who's going to be doing the actual work with the general contractors?
Yes, sir, we did. Uh, the one, for example, uh, NM Contracting, the one, uh, project that they submit that's similar, uh, it's a project that, uh, was done by a different subcontractor, not the one they submitted that is going to do the work here. Uh, and then the other, uh, general contractor, Holchimont, they didn't submit anything that's similar to HVAC related, uh, projects.
Well. I have experience in, in, in what we're looking at here. And, um. And I, I, I don't have any knowledge on, on Airco, I've never heard of them. NM Contracting, yes, Tex area, yes, Victoria area, yes, th- those are all higher. I would ask you to. Guarantee yourself in this district that, that the com subcontractor NM is using. Is, is not good and not better than the one that, that you're, you're putting as number one. You have NM at, as number seven and they're the, the lowest bidder. And, um, that's about, how much is it, doctor, twenty-eight thousand dollars?
Twenty-eight, according to my math.
About twenty-eight thousand dollars. And I don't know if we can table this, I don't know how to do this, Ivan, and give them more time to research this.
There's already a motion.
Unless, that's there, okay.
Go ahead. And if it'll, if it'll provide any reassurance, the, uh, the engineer and the project Trinity Engineering also concurs with the, uh, recommendation.
Trinity is, is okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, a second by Dr. Jaime, to consider approval of the administration's ranking for replacement of chillers. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against?
No, aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Item J. Uh, discussion of possible action for the board to consider approval of the administration's, um, recommendation to qualify companies that submitted qualification statement response, responses for the project to the second step of the selection process of the design and installation for the replacement of the fueling station, fuel pumps, and fuel tanks at the Transportation Department, proposal number nineteen zero five thirty-four. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we're recommending that you qualify and approve the following two vendors as finalists for the second phase of the design-build method in the construction project for the replacement of the fueling station at the Transportation Department. So Petroleum Solutions Inc., McAllen, Texas, and Trigen Construction, Westaco, Texas. This is step one, the RFQ was step one of a two-step process. The next step will be the request for proposals.
Yes.
So this is just asking them, the companies that already said, hey, we're here to now set up a bid, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then I move, I move to move to the, um, request for proposals.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Dr. Jaime. To consider approval of the administration's recommendation to qualify companies that submitted qualification statement responses for the project to the second step of the selection process. Any discussion? Or any other more comments? We're good? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. Item number K, or letter K. Discussion of possible action for the board to consider approval of the substantial completion and change order number two to the contract for the construction of the new field house at Westaco High School for additional work needed and corresponding additional days. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, recommend your approval for the following, for the Westaco High School new football field house project, substantial completion and change order number two for additional work needed and the corresponding additional contract days. The total amount for change order two is seven thousand three hundred?
Correct.
And, uh, the days, forty days.
And these change orders, it's, they fall within our contingency allowance, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Then I'll move to approve. The substantial completion and change order.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lopez? We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Lopez to, uh, consider approval of the substantial completion and change order number two for the Westaco High School Field House. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against? Motion carries. Item L. Discussion, a discussion of possible action for the board to consider approval of substantial completion and a deductive change order to decrease the project costs by the amount of the unused expenditure allowances of the building improvements project for the advanced manufacturing technology shop at the Joe Galvio Kate complex and the welding woodworking shop at the Pete Abrigo Egg Farm Complex, CSP number eighteen zero three twenty. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we're recommending your consideration to approve the following for the building improvements project for the advanced manufacturing technology shop at the Joe Galvio Kate complex and the welding woodworking shop at the Pete Abrigo Egg Arm Farm, Farm, Farm Complex. The sub, first of all, substantial completion of the project and a deductive change order to decrease the project costs by the amount of the unused expen, expenditure allowances, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and thirteen and sixteen cents.
So the idea behind this is that we didn't use, we came in under budget, basically. And we're also going to get listed, uh, just on. and we're also gonna get liquidated damages on top of that for delay of the project, is that right?
That is correct.
So we're gonna walk away with about 80 grand?
At this point, we're not looking at the liquidated damages for the date they are late just for the, reducing the count for the amount of allowance we did not spend in a proven substantial completion. In June, since substantial completion is April 29, they have 30 days to complete, complete, to finish completely their project. In June, we'll come back with the actual date when they finish that or not, and how much we're gonna assess, recommend to assess the liquidated damages.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the deduction, the change order that causes the deduction, and I, my hats off to you all for coming in under budget on the project, that's good.
So I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gonzalez? We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Gonzalez for, to approve the substantial completion and deductive change order to decrease the project costs by the amount of the unused expenditure allowances for the technologies at the shop and the welding. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those again? Motion carries. Item M. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider, consider approval to hire MEP solutions engineering to design the plants and specifications of an exhaust system for an addition of 12 welding booths to the Westaco High School I Wing Building. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, on February 28, Mrs. Avila and her team had applied and did receive a jet grant in the amount of $268,000. The grant was to purchase equipment for 12 welding stations. The welding stations require an exhaust system and electrical service for operation. The cost of the project is over $8,000, triggering the requirement by law that an engineer be hired for the project. We are recommending that the board approve to hire MEP solutions engineering to design the plans and specs and oversee the construction of an exhaust system for the 12 welding booths to be added to the Westaco High School's I Wing Building.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Dr. Jaime. You have a second?
Second.
And we have a second by Mr. Kennedy to approve MEP solutions engineer to design the plans and specifications for an addition of 12 welding booths to the Westaco High School I Wing Building. Any discussion?
Ms. Avila, thank you for all your hard work in, in getting that grant, I really do appreciate it.
My question is, the $12,000 fee for the engineer, will that come from the grant, or will that come, or is that, I, come out of our budget?
It will come out of our budget.
Okay, so we're, that's something that the grant will not cover. And do we have the funds to pay for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Good.
Alright. So we have a motion by Dr. Jaime, a second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion carries. Item M. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to hire Trinity MEP engineering to design the plans and specifications for plumbing and electrical improvements needed for the lit, for literacy cafe at the Westaco Public Library. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we're recommending you approve to hire Trinity MEP engineering to design the plans and specs and oversee the construction of the improvements needed for the Lit for Literacy Cafe that will be at the Westaco Public Library. The MOU for this project was approved on February 11th. The remodeling project is between 10,000 and 15,000 dollars.
Is the city sharing any of those costs?
Yes, they are, yes, sir.
They are?
Yes.
So are we, are we gonna pay for the full cost of the engineering firm?
Yes, we're paying for the engineer, uh, but it's a joint project with the city. So any, any work that has to be done within the city walls and to the building, that'll be the city's. And anything for the cafe that belongs to us, that will be our proportion of the work.
Okay. And the money to pay for the engineer will come from where?
Our fund, it's not the local construction fund.
Okay.
And we do have it.
Move to approve the recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Dr. Jaime to approve, uh, to hire Trinity MEP engineering to design the plans and specifications for plumbing and electrical improvements needed for the Lit for Literacy Cafe at the Westaco Public Library. Any discussion? Or any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those again? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is 8:05. The board will now go into closed meeting to discuss, um, the meeting agenda. A, personnel matters. One, employment of personnel, resignations, number two. Number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551074 and 551071. B, consultation with attorney regarding, A, pending or contemplated litigation, B, a settlement offer, C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the Westco ISD under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Board of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code 551.071. Also, that's it, right?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to see if we can go to item 15 to adjourn, I believe we don't have anything to, on item 13. Is that possible, Ivan?
Yeah, if there's, if there's no need for a closed session, you don't have to have, have one.
I'll second the motion. Okay, so, we got a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second to adjourn. Since we don't, we don't have anything in executive session.
That's early release.
Early release.
That's a first.
We don't have anything in executive session? Dr. Canales?
Dr. Canales?
We don't have anything?
We, we, I'm sorry, what?
You know if she says that we do, everyone's gonna look at her badly, right?
We don't. We, we, we had the special call board meeting last week, so updates, we, we...
So adjournment is what?
It's 8:07.